America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, alright, welcome everyone. Welcome back to some people, right, that are starting off our school year. Next up, we would have comments from the audience regarding any agenda items. Would anyone like to address the board this evening on any item on the agenda? We ask that you say your name and address for the record and limit your comments to five minutes. Would anyone like to address the board? Sure. Yep, come on in.
Hi. Jeff Chesney, Whittno Youth Football Committee here. Briefly, I'm not quite sure why I'm here. It was an agenda item that was, they wanted the board to get control of concessions inside and outside to the Booster Club. And I know last year, the Booster Club was trying to take over and control of the concession areas. They wanted to charge the youth organizations for rent, basically. And I guess I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew that, you know, we're part of the Whittno community, we have all Whittno kids in our program, and we don't want, you know, we don't want to pay an excessive amount of money to use it because then the fees for football have to go up for sure. You know, that price is going to roll right into, you know, the cost of our doing business. And we're all nonprofit, we're just barely scraping by, you know, keeping the kids in football uniforms and helmets and pads, so. But if it's otherwise, I'll stop by tonight.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
We are approving facilities use fees, but we can have a further conversation about, and maybe Quinn would be a good one to talk to about the policy, which is not on the agenda tonight. We'll follow up with that, Jeff. But thank you for speaking to the board. We think you're important.
Scott, catch me after that.
And we think you are invaluable, so thanks. Andrew, saw those kids out there.
We're approving that? We're voting on that?
We're approving the fees.
We're voting on that?
Yeah. So, next up, we would have the consent agenda, approval of Core Four and elementary handbooks. We have A, that's A, we have approval of August vouchers and vouchers payable, B. C is approval of July 27th and August 10th, 2015 School Board Meeting Minutes. D is approval of facilities use fees. E is approval of 2015-16 preliminary budget. And F is approval of seclusion restraint report. G is approval of notice of academic standards. We would vote on this with one vote, but before we do, we'll ask if anyone would like to pull any items.
Item E.
Anything else? F and G. Anything else?
Item D.
Okay, anything else? Seeing none, then we will be voting on A, B, and C. I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
And moved.
Seconded.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we'll take a look at the D, approval of facilities fees.
Good, so I admit I've had some electronic issues lately, unable to get into some things, I didn't know why, but I was looking for that comparison study, what it was going to cost and what it has cost, what the expense that has been incurred on some folks, some of our customers for the auditorium and the field and that kind of stuff versus what if we raise the fees, a typical invoice for the same type of customer would look like, and I haven't seen that. Did that come in and I missed it?
It's part of the note.
I didn't see it.
It's in the 220 page.
See, so out of the 220 pages, where is it?
Page 101.
Okay.
Alright, any other questions?
So, let me look at it real quick. If you want to come back to D, that would be fine.
Can we somehow answer the gentleman's question, this gentleman's question in this part?
Um, under use fees? Yeah, well, let's look in here again. What we are approving is, I'm sorry, let me hold on a second.
I can tell, because currently it says what we're approving is going from $100 per use for concession stand to contact the Booster Club to determine what you have to pay for it.
But they are, they would come under category B, I believe, which would be no cost incurred.
Group two?
Right, I don't believe they are paying anything, right?
Right.
Right.
And we resolved that, you know, Quinn and I went with people from the youth football and the Booster thing, and we took it into policy.
Last year.
And the first two games or weekends, I think you guys were underneath the vouchers, but then three and four, we ended up making an arrangement with the Booster Club that you guys move in for those, and you're under that no fee area.
But I think this year, that there's no, it wouldn't be inside the concession area, and there shouldn't be a cost to you because you are under group B. If you look at our policy, it is stated under there. And from what I know, there's a new re- team in the Booster Club, and I think they're open-minded, and the district owns the concession stand. The Booster Club owns some property in the concession stand.
Right.
And if you want to use their equipment, there is a fee for that. If you don't, it's yours to use, to leave it clean, you know, just as good as you got it, and we are here to support our youth group programs.
And I think that that use, that equipment usage fee is set by the Booster Club, right? That's not, because that's their equipment.
Because they know what it costs to replace, it's mostly for replacement and usage of it, and I believe your guys are pretty self-contained anyways.
So that, so that's not affected by this vote tonight?
Nope.
Right. Right, we're just approving fees, okay?
As far as these go, my one concern is, well, in some cases it went down, some cases it went up, the comparison study between current and proposed for these, some of these invoices, but one of them, like for youth basketball, for example, it nearly tripled. And I'm just concerned about those kinds of increases.
That's not Whittno youth basketball, though.
It's W-I-U.
Oh, Wisconsin, okay, alright, well.
Yeah, with regards to that one, that was what I was a little confused about, too, on the comparison rental. So we're going from current to propose, and from what looks like on the, as far as the usage of those gyms, it looks like most of them are going down, so I don't understand how the proposed is going up.
Okay.
Is that because of the change in group classification? For how, for example, higher level camps, their small gym, main gym fee proposed goes down slightly, but the Wisconsin youth basketball, it goes, it's nearly tripled.
I adjusted it based on, it's based on length of use.
Okay.
You have not reflected in there is the number of hours. Do you look at Wisconsin youth basketball or Wisconsin?
No, you got it.
Basketball?
B.I.
I believe their usage is well exceeding the 12-hour mark. And higher level, higher level camps, it only does 2 hours. So, as I was looking at the comparisons, I came up with a structure, it was more of 3, 4, 5 hours for 12 hours.
Okay. Gotcha.
Too little, so I tried to take it back to an hour.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate all the work on this.
Okay. So, questions?
Did we receive any other feedback from any of these other organizations that are having a price exchange?
We have not.
Did they know?
No. Did you notify them?
Was, Scott, was anybody notified?
Was anybody notified of this change?
No, we haven't approved.
Yeah, they can't notify them.
Yeah, and proposed.
I just meant of the proposed, not of the change, but of the proposed change. I wondered if any of them were aware, other than if they were here or pulls up on YouTube.
And as a reminder, these rates wouldn't go any effective to you for any longer, so they're still under in the contract, so you probably agree to.
I know the people who are in the management, some of the first of this year, make them aware of the 2000.
Okay, other questions? If not, then I would entertain a motion to approve the fee schedule as a fee. Just a motion.
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Next up, we have the approval of the preliminary budget. And we have some questions.
Yes.
Quinn?
We added to our fund balance?
Right now, it's unaudited, but yes, approximately $150,000. We had revenues exceeded expenditures for the past year, and that's what really put us over the top. For comparison sake, you know, $150,000 as a percent of our revenue budget is about one-half of 1%. So I think we came out quite well in this last year. We didn't really add the fund balance, but we did add a little bit to it.
Because at one point, weren't we like $70,000 into it?
We thought that we were going to be, yes, but by the time we reached, got to this point, where the auditors have been in and we made adjusting entries for different things, right now, it looks like we're $150,000 ahead of the game for last year.
Okay, and with the retirement benefits, Lowell gave us a three-year synopsis of what they've done, there's several hundred thousand dollars that were budgeted and not used. Do we know what we did with this money?
Well, last year, we expended, here's how it can vary, $616,000. The year before, we only expended $393,000. Can I tell you where specific dollars went? I can't, because they would have been spread over, you know, various places in the budget. So when we, you know, if we didn't deliberately take the money from someplace else, or take it to someplace else, I can't actually describe exactly where that money would be going.
Uh, well, in the email that we got from Lowell, 2012-13, we budgeted $920,000, spent 532 of it. 13-14, 552,000, spent 392. 14-15, 616, $100,000, and spent 316. I mean, these are some big numbers, and that's 300,000 there. There's almost a million dollars there of money that was budgeted and was actually used for that item.
Right.
So that's a lot of money going into the budget that wasn't really budgeted for anywhere, and I don't see that money going back into the fund balance.
Lowell?
That money is, because we never had an OPEP study, never had one, never got approved, you have to take your best guess, and you have to budget so that if everybody claims their money, that there's enough in there. In those years, everybody didn't claim what they could have claimed.
Right.
So I, and I understand your question, that's not your question, your question is, where does it go? But in the grand scheme of 24 million, when you get the, when you see the audited report, you'll see a, was it 27 is specialized one?
127.
Where you went up from, you may have budgeted 200, and you end up having to spend 700 in that category. It's unpredictable, you know, you still have to serve the needs of your resident students, whatever those needs are, especially if they come in with an IEP. And that was one of the big ticket items that went up substantially. Can't think of what, there was a second big ticket item, I can't think of it.
I mean, in these three years, roughly $850,000 difference between what was budgeted and what was actually spent.
And that, that year where we budgeted 900 something, that year we did put a ton extra in the fund, fund balance and carryover. And that's how our fund balance grew so quickly that we could literally pay for our last facilities study. Is that a good thing to do? No, we don't want to fall short, though, either.
No.
Which line item is he referring to, Doug? Where is that going, in our current budget?
If you look at page, in, let's see, B, B, 1, 2, 3, it's numbered page 2, way down at the bottom. It's the 290,000 other support services line. We, we have, as Lowell indicated, for a number of years before, I think either one of us was here, there was a, they deliberately levied a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, which ended up getting used in the defeasance process. So in that respect, it was good that they had it. You wouldn't do that very often. And when I started, I looked back at the previous three years of payments to retirees and took an average and put that into the budget, because we had no way of knowing what people are going to seek for reimbursement. They've got contractual rights to get reimbursed for medical expenses and/or medical insurance. Some of them are using it, some of them are not. You know, from one, as, as you saw with the information that Lowell gave you, that number just goes up and down, and we don't have any control over it.
We wanted to make sure the board was aware of it, though, so if you do want to adjust it, import more on a different account, you can. Plus, we were using a three-year average, and I showed you the difference between the three-year and the two-year. If you decided to use that two-year average, that would free up, was it like $100,000? Something like that, I don't know, six something or five something. And I can't get my email in here, so.
Okay. It's just a lot of money that floats around and ultimately gets spent, or portion of it gets spent.
Well, if I can throw in an example of how that can help out, if you want to look at it that way. Last year, because of a variety of reasons, a number of people were hired after the annual meeting, teacher aides, some teachers, and in the overall salary picture, we exceeded the budget, but we had things like this to offset it. You know, can I draw a line directly from point A to point B? No, I can't. But, you know, the way our system works is, if you run over budget here, you hope to go under budget someplace else, and they even out. And the last several years, we've come very close to evening out, you know, depending on, you know, I consider, you know, 1% or 2% accuracy to be pretty good, you may not. But at any rate, that's.
Well, I don't know if this is the place to talk about this, but the 19 employees, I believe, that you mentioned at last meeting as well, or at the finance meeting, how do we not know about that need prior to the start of the school year?
Can I try, get a little help from the back there? I mean, I think I can answer that. As an example, well, I don't know a specific one, I know one that we're dealing with right now, but somebody moves into the district, for example, and has a special needs child that requires a full-time teacher or aide, we have to hire somebody. We have teachers who resign and have to be replaced, because otherwise, we have a third grade class without somebody in it. That's how that sort of thing happens. We can't just say, we're not going to hire somebody.
No, but that'd be one for one, we wouldn't be adding staff.
But the dollars aren't always one for one.
It's generally when we add staff, it's because you end up accepting an IEP from another district that transferred IEP, until you redo it, that's what you have. And if they come with their own aide, or they have some other special need, that we have to hire someone for that, nursing or whatever, that's where that growth came from. And you'll see that a lot more when we go through the audited budget, because then you can go through the different categories as well.
Is that, was it unusual year? Or no, it was from my perspective?
Yes. I would also, just, again, as an example, I told you on Saturday when I wrote this, that Human Resources reports that as of last week, all teacher positions have been filled. Within 24 hours of me sending this to you, we had a teacher resignation. That's how fluid this whole thing is, and it continues to be throughout the year. Now, last year, hopefully, was really unusual, right, Dennis? But, you know, I understand we have more kids that have come in this summer with some special needs that we're going to have to address, so.
Resigns, yeah?
Yes.
And on the expenditure side, category 240000, School Building Administration, we're up, we're up $175,000.
Which line item?
240000, School Building Administration.
Yeah, that went from $1,278,000 to $1,452,000, and most of that is in salaries and benefits. And I presume it's because we had additional class sections or something, I'm not sure. Looking for some help on.
Function 240,000 is the one that he's talking about, in which principals, there are secretaries, there are supplies and equipment, all those are all things that would be in the principal's budget.
No, but the major, major portion of it, of the increase, is in personnel. I mean, otherwise, you're looking at, for example, supplies going up by $3,000. That's not a big deal, but.
Possible that the position added that.
That's very possible.
How are the, how are the coaches listed? Could they be, could they have been migrated to under administration?
Uh, they could have.
Probably not. I would always say, questions in that category.
The, the budget form that EPI has us use has the totals, it doesn't break down into the details. So, I mean, without that detail, you're speculating on what caused it to happen. Doug's right, usually it's, you know, if you do a 1.62% increase in everybody's salary, that's going to be the main chunk of it. And then if you have, you know, we have a lot of support staff, the secretary, if that's all underneath that 240 area for School Building Administration, that would explain it, because our principals have stayed the same.
This is an increase.
Right, but that includes the salary increases.
That's $174,000 that we changed from, and I can understand, I mean, do we know if it's like all of a sudden, we added a specific person to significantly higher salary that would have put that off? Because if not, I mean, that's giant chunk.
They're the same, they're the same people that were there last year, except for the line.
Right. So where does the 100, so back to the question, where does the $175,000 increase come from?
You have to get the detailed, if we want that answer next, next time, we can do that. Right now, we don't have it in front of us.
Okay. But in one of your emails that we just got, you tell us, we get detailed information at the finance committee, and I don't believe we get that.
Oh, any, yes, certainly, Stephanie said, show me everything that's in the 240, because this is a hot topic. You'll have it when you show up next.
Put it on the agenda, and we'd start talking about it.
Yeah. So if you tag, I mean, a couple of them that you want to look at, we'll bring you all the detail.
Other questions? So you're going to get back to us on that? On what that amount is, right?
Through the finance committee?
Yes.
I think you could just send a memo to the whole board, even then, if you want to talk about it, talk to Steph. But I think for now, you're just asking for information. What is the difference in that one line?
That can be sent to the whole board, it doesn't need to just go to the committee.
Right.
I'd like to see it.
Any other questions on the budget? Seeing none, then I would entertain a motion, this is still preliminary, correct? We are?
That is correct.
Still, this could change. So, for tonight, I would entertain a motion to approve the budget. So moved. And moved.
Second.
And seconded. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Seeing none, motion carries. Okay, now, next up, we have the approval of seclusion and restraint report, and we had some questions on that.
And actually, my question on that one also pertains to the academic standards. I think typically, we would have had prior reports before putting it under the consent agenda for some factors. So I'm a little just made the assumption that we have consent agenda without prior discussion memo or information.
Mm-hmm. So, do you have a question?
Yeah, it's just.
Alright. Any other comments? Sorry, we missed that. Then I would entertain a motion to approve the seclusion and.
Well, wait, wait, wait.
Should we have to push this to next time?
Right.
We need to move this on the, on the agenda to the other section, and then move it to vote next time on the consent.
I agree.
Otherwise, we're not following the policy properly.
It shows up here for the first time, and then we approve it, and I.
Lowell? Is it, um?
There's no problem with timing, Dennis.
I believe the section on the policy, I mean, I have the agenda.
So we have to approve it tonight?
Well, it's on the agenda, but it doesn't have to be approved by September 1st, it has to be on the agenda by.
Well.
I would have to have it in order, I don't think it's supported by the government, it would have to be in order by September 1st, and the last two years, the college, what happened, we have to.
Since, since it's a, it's a report of something that's already happened, so you can't undo that, you know, it is what it is, and it's informing the board that there were this many documented incidents of seclusion restraint, and then one regular student found an analyst. So we can certainly, there's, assuming, and that's a big stuff, Dennis is right, I'm just kidding. Let's follow the procedures, and now we've had it on this agenda, and we'll report it again in September, if that makes sense.
Well, are we gonna, we probably need to approve it tonight, though.
Well, I think we need Dennis to make sure, to find out exactly what that wording is.
But we don't have another board meeting before this.
We don't have another board meeting, so to be safe, I think we should approve this.
The information is not going to change.
Yeah, we're not going to change history.
Right.
I agree with that, and I, but I also agree with Kevin on the, you know, I've been saying all along, we shouldn't see something first on a meeting that we're going to approve it, but in this case, a historical thing or against the clock.
Or against the clock, in this case.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't fight it, but I would make an issue of saying.
Really, in the whole year, this is the first time that I've missed, totally missed that, and I apologize for that, on both of these items. That we all noticed, you know?
I'm writing down.
So if you're comfortable, we could strike one, strike two, and then I only have one left, and I'm out. Okay, so, do you guys, would you be okay to approve this one tonight, because there might be a state statute we're up against? And if so, I would entertain a motion then to approve it.
Motion.
Reprimand, so noted, okay? Give me a second.
Second.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Did you vote?
I didn't vote.
Okay, abstained?
I abstained.
One abstained, okay. Two abstained, so the motion, and I vote, you and us, four of us, it still carries. Phew, that was tricky. Okay, next up, I'm sorry, you guys, oh, yeah. Number, the next item then would be the approval of notice of academic standards, because I thought these were just routines, so I didn't really question them. And, okay. Questions here, or is this, do you want to lay this over, and if so, what would be
I guess, I mean, the, 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 one of them was that we needed, all you're approving is notice of.
We mail that, or we post it, or what do we do?
We post it.
Most of the extra requirements in the state budget kick in next year, for some reason, like the civics test is going to start with next year's kids, but this one, they decided to start immediately, why?
Well, I hope not, that's not our job, really, to be wordsmithing a letter from administration. But by law, we have to follow the law, so I hope we don't.
Well, I, I don't know that, I mean, we review, we should review stuff before we approve it, and if we're supposed to approve it, then we should review it, and it's not necessarily wordsmithing, but if you have any...
I get that, I get that.
If you have any contention with it, then you bring it up. So, I'm not wordsmithing, but I'm reviewing.
Okay, so, any other comments on the letter? And would you be willing to go ahead and approve this one as well, this one came up fast, it's a new thing for us, so...
Yes.
You would be willing, would you make a motion to that one?
Motion to approve.
A second.
And a second, all in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
One opposed, and one?
Abstained.
Abstained. Two abstained, so there were three. It failed, sorry. So we'll have to bring it back in the next meeting.
The abstention doesn't count as a vote.
But three is not a quorum in a meeting.
It's always, Robert's, or it's a majority, the people in attendance is always a quorum of the board membership, but so that's... It's okay.
Without it being approved, you're just violating the...
I'm up on that, man, I'm in on that, I am in on that.
But let's clarify...
Bring him on.
The head administrator gets arrested, right, not, not the board?
Put my name on it.
It's the clerk, usually it's the clerk.
I'm all for it, right there, Quinn Burnett.
Let's, let's do this one at a time, I'm sorry. Let's do this one person at a time, and allow me to call on you to speak, because it's getting a little hard to follow.
Go ahead, we have policies and procedures in place.
We do.
We need to follow, we should have even passed the first one. We, we, administration...
Well, let's stop discussion, because the vote has been taken.
Needs to bring things to us in timely fashion.
This is not correct, the vote has been taken and it failed, so bring it back next time. We're not re-discussing it, we're not bringing it back. We aren't, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have allowed that, the vote's been taken and it's appealed. So let's let it go.
I have a question for procedure. If a vote fails, doesn't that reopen it for discussion? Procedurally?
I don't think so, I think it's over.
Well, how come when we make a motion, and it fails, like a motion I have made before, and it fails, and then somebody else makes a motion, and then it passes, I mean, and there's discussion between, discussion after the new motion, I mean...
After the vote, is what I thought.
Well, we just voted, right?
We voted, after the vote, I'm not aware that you can...
We've had, we've had one before where there was more discussion, where I motioned, he seconded, we're the only two who voted.
And then we do have discussion.
You voted it down, and there was more discussion, I won't be did.
And then, and then another motion was made, and it was seconded by somebody else, and then it passed five-two.
And I think Lowell's right, though, because we had three yeses and one no, and we're all here, so that's still a majority. Yeah, I think you should have...
It's called a supermajority, if it has to be on the total number of members.
But when it fails, then...
Present or non-present?
When it fails, then there's allowed more discussion, and another motion for something to either pass or fail.
But I think...
Didn't fail or passed?
I think it did pass, though, I think Lowell's right, we're informed right now, because we're all here.
Oh, okay.
And there were three yeses, one no, and two abstained, so there's still a majority vote for yes. So I think that...
So there is no need for discussion.
Be quiet over there.
So there is no need for discussion.
So then it would have passed under those rules.
So there is no need for discussion.
Boy, I'm not clear about that, but...
Kathy's checking on it.
We'll come back to that, or we'll wait.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to, because I heard that the administration's been thinking of a change of budget, and I brought the previous one to state.
Right, budget, we, we realize that, and had they just maybe put a no on it?
For it to be approved tonight, it shouldn't have been a consent agenda.
The reason I asked her to be on tonight was because the state budget said that he and my dad, they voted after that, except for we didn't do it since we were...
No, you didn't, you didn't care.
You did what you had to do.
Yeah, absolutely.
It shouldn't have been a consent agenda.
And again, it's just a notice.
But, we would have had to approve it tonight anyway.
So can we, can we table this temporarily?
But it already passed. Is there popcorn?
Lowell thinks it passes, oh my gosh. I don't think it's telling you that level of detail. The short version.
Get the spectacles on it.
Please be patient with us, we will work this out, hang on.
What number Walgreens are those?
Luckily, it doesn't come up often.
This doesn't happen when Mr. Roy's not here.
Okay, so, Kathy's doing one quick title check.
So Jordi Nelson's off for sure.
That's not on the agenda.
It's not.
Do you get a vote?
We can't discuss that, sorry.
I heard it's a cruciate.
That is sad.
Cruciate, cruciate. I don't know if that was a fighting bag, no system. Those were the immediate risk factors we're absolutely going to do in the next month.
They do not count.
There you go.
Yes, and it sounds like it passed.
Three to one. Let's move on.
Okay. It's passed, and again, I apologize for not putting that on twice, and we will watch that in the future. Next up, we have old business to discuss and take possible action on district mission, vision, and strategies. We've had this on the agenda before, thank you for the, the work on this, my, does anyone have questions? If not, I just have one, how are we going to use this updated version of the vision, or the new vision and the goals that we've set?
Well, assuming it passes, I've got it in my presentation for Thursday, and then we'll also be talking about it in the August institute.
Okay.
But I, I literally have this in the, in my presentation for the staff on Thursday.
Okay.
Oh, and new staff, I did share it already this morning with the new staff.
And then are we going to look at our board agendas and align those to the goal this year? I think that's what you guys had talked about doing, or at least making an attempt, to link our board agendas more closely to our strategic plan this year. All right. And no other discussion? I would entertain a motion to approve the new district mission, vision, and strategies.
So moved.
And moved and seconded. Any other discussion? I don't want to move things too fast. Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Under old business B, discuss and take possible action on 2015-16 staff handbook. Any discussion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, in looking at this, there were a couple of things. The retirement section only references the Wisconsin WRS contribution, but it doesn't discuss the structure, at least I couldn't find it in here, I didn't see the, the structure if they apply for an early retirement. Which, while I realize that could come up for review every year, so we'll quote the handbook anyway. So that's, that's not in here. The other thing that, that's been kicked around off and on is having a way to donate your sick time or vacation time for someone who is ill or having a severe personal event, that other staff can donate their time to that other person. We still haven't, haven't included some sort of procedure for that in the handbook either. That, those questions do come up periodically, it would be nice to have something in place, so that there's not a question if it can be done or not, and I think those two things should certainly be part of any employee handbook. The third piece in here is, again, any type of mention of retirement and benefits for someone other than instructional staff, that we talk about what kind of package we could put together for our secretaries and for our janitorial staff, all of whom have been serving the district for a substantial amount of time as well. And those things are, again, not in here.
I have something, I think those are great points, I have...
Hold on one second, I just want to write the second one down, I mean, first, early retirement, and the other one was? I'm sorry, sick leave transfer, I'm sorry, okay, and...
And then also by having something for the janitorial and secretarial staff.
Right, I've got that. Okay. Chad?
This is under old business, when was the last time it was brought before the board? It was not last, it was not at the last meeting, I'm trying to figure out why this is under old business.
It doesn't have to be in the meeting, immediately preceding, we've reviewed and revised the, unless you want it to be...
Well, I just wonder, because you're...
It's in the new document, it's an old document.
So this has been unchanged completely?
It's been discussed, and the board changes it, I don't, they can change it every month if they want to, like Stephanie said, it doesn't. So, this was reviewed by the personnel committee, and the early retirement was talked about, I said, be happy to put it in, but there was no strong movement to put it in, because it's, depending on the, you know, if we're ever in a budget crisis, it's one of the first things that would be pulled, could you do it through a board meeting, yes? So if, just the personnel committee did not add it, but that doesn't mean the majority of the board couldn't say, put that in there.
Personnel, look at this?
Yeah, we spent...
You did go through it, okay, good.
I guess my only concern is, is that if I am an employee of the district, and if this is, if this is my go-to, just like we tell the students to go to their handbook and start reading, and they have to sign up on it, and if that's the first place that they're going to look to have some of these questions answered, even if it does need a review every year, and you have to edit it, and it's more of a living document, I'd like it to be as comprehensive as possible.
So, does everyone agree we can have the committee look at this, or the, these revisions added to it? And then does it go back to personnel, and would that be timely enough?
Well, it's, the, the updates that are there right now, you can approve...
Tonight?
Tonight, and then say, you would like the personnel committee, or you can, as a majority of the board, you can just say, administration should put in the early retirement. And then the sick leave transfer one, I did a little process about that, I'd like to hear some other HR people comment on that, because I've, I've never seen that in a, it's not even in the old contracts, they had to make special requests, and then had to end up getting, I mean, if we did it, they had to approve that board, and it, so it wasn't even in the full negotiated agreements.
Right, but even, even to have a paragraph in, again, if this is the first place that staff are going for those answers, to even have a paragraph in there that said, if need arises, please contact, we consider this a special request on a case-by-case basis, please contact administration, just...
There's no guidance from the handbook.
Right, there's, there's nothing here.
And again, it's, it can certainly go in there if you want it, every situation that comes up isn't going to be, is a guide, you know, so...
We do our best.
It's going to be in, if there's more generalities and specifics. But any topic you want can be addressed. Lowell, say it.
Yeah, I was just going to say that, really, what you have in front of you is something that we passed tonight, and let's say, Lowell's, looking at these right now, as an official, they have, we can change our handbook, they filed it with the board. As far as the time close, I thought through the, the idea there was, we're doing these expectations of the year, we're choosing, we're voting, we're hiring, signing, and everything, so if you're going to have, if the board chooses to say, we're able to do this on you, to do it, and it's a couple of years, and it's in it, it's in the bill, it's in the bill. And the early retirement, the non-technical staff, that's in here tomorrow, so it's a matter of, it's not a, it's not a, it's not a decision,